I'm going to call to order a meeting of the Board of Selectmen for January 13th, 2020. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First on the agenda tonight will be public comment. If anybody has any public comment, please come up to the podium here. There's a sign-in sheet at the podium for your name and address, just so we can have it for the meeting records. So if anybody has anything tonight they'd like to come up and talk about? Going once, going twice. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a public hearing. This is a joint poll petition from National Grid and Verizon for polls on Mass Ave and Chickering Road. So, can I hear a motion to move into a public hearing?
Motion to move into a public hearing.
Second down.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to move into a public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are now in a public hearing. Do we have a representative from either National Grid or Verizon? And we do.
Yep, good evening. David Boucher, Senior Designer at National Grid, 1101-
Hi David, nice to see you again.
Been a little while.
A little bit. 1101 Turnpike Street here in North Andover. The DOT has a road project at the intersection of Mass Ave and Chickering Road. And what they're asking, they came to us, asking to relocate 10 poles and also install one new pole. Now, on the drawing that you have, it may be a little bit hard to read. There are a number of poles there that you can see, and I know it's pretty small what ended up getting sent to you. So I got a zoomed-in version of that. If you had any questions, there are 10 that are relocating, none of them are relocating more than six and a half feet. One of them's moving 16 and a half. But the 10 of them that are moving, in general, they're moving about five and a half to six feet in a northwesterly direction. Now, that was at request of the state. They may have some reason why they needed to move them that way. But that's all work that we're doing for the state so that they go on with their project. And if the town sees fit, it would enable us to do that for them and do that, the relocation and the install of one new pole for them.
So, I had a question as to which, sorry, I have a question. Which poles? Because the picture has like 19 poles that I could identify. So which ones, just so I'm clear?
If-
If you could use a reference number, the lots, the lot numbers to reference or something?
Right above 561 Mass Ave. Right where Adams Street meets.
Okay.
Pole 4962. Then the next one, the next one, the next one, the next one, the next one.
Right, okay, those are all on that block. All the ones on that block.
Yeah, from Phillips Brook Road all the way to Chickering Road. Those are all moving in a northwesterly direction away from Chickering. About six, five and a half to six feet. The one that's right at the island there at Chickering and Mass Ave is moving 16 and a half. And then there's one across the street which is an Autran that's moving four feet. And then two of them that are on Chickering Road are moving six and six and a half feet respectively away from Chickering Road. So they must be widening the road there.
So just going back to the drawing, are there indicators of, there's highlighting on the drawing, are there, is there a to and a from location that we can decipher from the drawing?
What I would expect is, because they also placed existing locations on there, you see some solidly colored ones, those aren't moving. So that would, what you're looking at would be the existing location, and they'd move it six and a half feet in that northwesterly. The new location isn't on there, I would say.
The new location is not on here.
The way that's demarcated.
I know. Makes it a little difficult.
Yeah, I mean-
Hold on, are you with the state or?
Scott Kelly from Mass DOT.
Okay, yeah, come on up, Scott.
I have a plan.
Why don't you come up to the, we want to make sure we can hear you at home, so either at the podium or at the desk, whichever you're comfortable.
Scott, these are, you can see that.
Is that the plan they're working from?
That's what they have.
Okay. I have a plan that I could present the board that may show it a little bit more clear.
It has, you've got to look carefully, but it has the existing location and the proposed location, if you look carefully. Essentially, we're moving it back to put a sidewalk in. And so they're going from their present location back, whatever dimensions required. It varies between four feet to six feet. But to the-
It's the same, it's the same spot, just push back.
Same general location, just moving it back together.
It's not, not an L shape, but a straight.
Both the poles, exactly.
Okay, okay.
Straight back. So I don't know if that helps any, but-
So about how far back? I mean-
What's required to get in the sidewalk, essentially?
Okay.
It's, some places there's curves and there's other locations that vary a little bit more because it's either an island going in or what have you. But they're all on this plan and these are the approved plans.
So how do we read the plan? So now, how are they moving?
Okay, so, we could take this location, for instance, again, if we had this on a PDF, you could look at it real clearly. But essentially, right now, it's at the back of the curve. We're putting in the sidewalk, so we're going to move it back to this location, which is the red pole there.
Okay, so then on this draw, on these drawings that we've got in front of us, so that we're just saying, you're just saying, you're just, you're just saying that these are moving in this direction back, or, I mean, is that yellow highlighting direction indicator? But I guess it is, kind of.
It is. You can see on this plan, here's north, and again, like you said, it's, this is north, I'd actually say northeast, but they're just basically moving back from the face of curve where they are now, back roughly four and a half to six feet, or thereabouts, to get behind the new sidewalk.
I have a question for 591 Mass Ave. It looks like that pole is already pretty close to her home. And so how close will that pole end up being if you're moving it four feet back from where the edge of her foundation is? Even that, like, so-
We'll take a look at it. I don't, I think that pole's moving four feet. Is that the one in the corner of Autran? That one's moving four feet. And it's down Autran, right? Let's wait till I get my plan back.
Actually, if it's moving down Autran as opposed to further into her property, that would be helpful. That wasn't obvious from, like, the map.
I have to wait till I have my plan back before I can-
And none of these are on private property?
That is correct. It's all in the public way, yeah, all in the public way.
In the case of, you know, on 591's, we're already so close to it to begin with, so I was just curious, what direction it's moving? If we're moving it on, moving it towards her house or moving it farther down that intersection? Because the way the highlight looks, it looks like we're moving it so that it would effectively be next to what is, I think, her three-season porch.
Is there any flexibility of putting it in a spot that's, might not like, be like, I'm making this up, but like in front, somebody's front door or anything like that, is there?
I'll have to defer to the, these are not our facilities.
Because I think, none of us would really like that. If it moves closer to her property than not in a good place, but-
Yeah, that would be the preferred thing, anytime we do that out there. I mean, when we, when we place it, we ask for it to be in a certain spot, but if it needs to-
A little to the left or a little to the right?
Yeah, a little to the left, a little right, if it's going to give the traffic a better view or the customer, the residents, a better-
Nobody wants a telephone pole right smack in front of their front door.
Right, yeah. Kind of treat it like it's your own home. I mean, that's why I look at things when I go home.
Are these all going to be new poles too? They're not going to be like, yank them out of there and replacing them?
That's, that's right. They'll be new poles. They're probably going to be a little higher, too. Usually when we upgrade, when we replace poles, we'll go to a standard height that we use, which is 40 feet. If there are any 35-footers, we'll make them 40s.
And will these all be single standalone poles, no guide wires?
There are guide wires at numerous spots.
Are they existing today, or are those guide wires that are today?
I don't know, but if they do end up placing them, they'd be kept in the public way, once again, to support the line. And if we needed to put them on private property, we would have to attain easement rights from the customers, so, yeah.
We have a question about, about this property because this is the house that's coming down.
Okay.
It would be better if it moved that way versus-
Right, yeah.
Toward, is that-
To the 595.
Yeah.
That's toward Mass Ave, right?
Yeah, so we're pulling onto-
I can see the intersection, yeah.
Well, towards Chickering.
Exactly.
But see, that's already a pole that's pretty close to her home.
Yeah, yeah. There's not much public way left there.
Here, here.
Yeah, there might be, there might be the roadway.
So you're talking about the property that was taken?
Here's the picture that my, I know the one next door.
Yeah, this is, oh, this is-
Laurie, do you have this in PDF? Can we-
So that it would be better if it went towards the property that was made, if it was right smack.
Can we put it on the screen so folks in the audience who we're talking about?
Yeah.
What's that? Doesn't need to be in color. That's okay.
Well, we've got to get it out of the way of the sidewalk. Oh, I don't know what the sidewalk is. We need to get the sidewalk, the only reason we're moving that pole is to get the sidewalk in. We're moving it to the back of the sidewalk. Right now, it's in the proposed sidewalk. We're just moving it four feet back to get it out of the sidewalk.
So I know that that sounds like just moving it four feet back, but there's, it's already 10 feet away from her foundation.
It's pretty, it's pretty tight. I mean, we've all-
We understand that, yeah.
So that's what we're asking, if you could look at an alternative direction to move it?
We agree that that is, you know, it's not, if we need to, we have both ADA requirements, there's going to need to be a wheelchair ramp there, and we need to get a sidewalk in. So, again, the back of the sidewalk. And we can put it as close to the back of the sidewalk as possible, but that's really the only viable location for that pole.
So even though-
Is the sidewalk coming down Autran at all?
No.
So why couldn't we just move this pole farther?
Because the sidewalk is going there.
Yes. So why couldn't we move this pole deeper into Autran?
Well, that's, that's where it is going.
So we're not moving it four feet in from the sidewalk, we're moving it four feet down in Autran?
Yes, correct, correct. So, the house is there, the pole is here, and it's moving there. The pole now.
Fortunately, we can't.
Can you, yeah, can we? If we had this-
So, again, it-
Yeah, we, if we can get that onto that-
Does move it closer to her foundation presently.
Let me see what we've got for-
I think, I guess it would be up to them, but I would think that people would prefer it even closer to their foundation versus right in front of their front door, right in. If that property is very close to the street, is she here?
She's not here.
Who is that?
I think that, that probably isn't conducive to a good meeting.
Sorry, so you were saying it's going to move further down Autran? Is it an option to move it further down Mass Ave, so it's next to the 595 house?
That puts us, it still puts it in the, you're moving it along the sidewalk.
Right. But I mean, along the sidewalk and back, because that house is getting torn down, so.
I will have to refer to the engineer designing those lines, but I certainly have no problem. I don't, that one maybe guides, that one guides.
Oh, so is someone taking notes here? I mean, that might be a question that we want to come back with and respond to.
There's flexibility, as I understand it, within the parameters of the electrical engineer to move these poles around, and we will be glad to do so as long as we can still facilitate the property that we need to construct the project within its ADA requirements and others.
Yeah, I think, I think you understand, we're trying to be sensitive to, nobody wants a pole right in front of their front door.
As do-
Nobody wants a pole that, it's like practically in there. Yeah, it's pretty tight in that spot as it is.
Certainly is.
So I guess we're looking for some sensitivity to this person who's already kind of given up a lot. It's tight there.
We are very sensitive to that and every other residence's concerns, and we'll be happy to address those by whatever means we can. But again, we have a sidewalk, we can't have a utility pole.
Well, you need to have a sidewalk.
Exactly.
This school's right.
Precisely, our concern.
We understand that.
And we're trying to get all these facilities in a very tight area, and again, we'll work, if we can move it, again, don't engineer the utility lines as long as it meets their requirements. The only one thing I may be at, that pole is a guide, and it might be.
It is-
That might be, yeah, appears to be guided.
Already a guided pole.
Yeah, so if you, I'm just thinking, if you move it more towards her house, she's going to have a guide closer to her house, is my only reasonable point. That may be reason to keep it out closer to the corner.
We've had some tricky situations here that we've been able to solve before, so we need to make sure that we're doing the best we can here.
And I'm sorry, can you explain about the pole that's in the little triangle between the right-hand turn from Chickering onto Mass Ave? Like, is that, that's the one that's highlighted on the map, so you're moving that one?
This one, yeah, the one that's in the triangle, yeah. If I remember correctly, we have a mast arm fixture, fixture going in there, and we just need to move that within the island.
It's still in the triangle.
Still in the triangle. We just need to move it to get it out of the location of the proposed traffic signal.
Moving forward with this, so how do we, how do we work this out that, I mean, will you give some alternatives as to what would be best and let's have a-
The best way to handle this is to meet with the customer, the resident.
Right.
Show them where the proposed spot is, four feet away from the existing one, and see if that works with them.
That sounds good.
And not have any issues with it being in the sidewalk.
Okay.
Someone from our wall Sam office designed this for the DOT. I can contact him and let him know that he needs to meet Scott, right? Scott, out there, and we can hold this up. Otherwise, you can, you can trust us, use our best judgment, and place it in the spot between now and then, between now and when, I don't know what Scott's parameters are for his time.
So what I'd like to see is that we, Plan A, I'd like to see us meet with the customer, see what's his position. And we've also got folks here that I'm sure, I want to say a few things about this, so it's a public hearing, so that everyone has an option to come up and talk to it. Are you good with your presentation at this point? Scott, Dave, yeah? All right, you're welcome to stay up here if you'd like.
Sure.
And then I'm going to invite the neighbors up to the podium if they'd like to speak on, on this petition. So, first of all, any other questions from the board before we move forward? Okay, so, this is a public hearing. You're welcome to come up here and ask questions of the utility and the state.
I just have a quick question. I know I'm-
Can you state your name? I know, we all know your name, but can you just state it and write it down?
Stephanie C. Wade, so I'm at 615, and I think you're putting the new pole in front of that tree. So I think right now, the way the plans are, the guide wire goes towards the tree. Do you think the guide wire could be perpendicular to the sidewalk so it goes along the sidewalk versus coming in? Or does it have to go, like, here's where the pole's going to be, and right now, on the plan, it's going this way into the tree? Do you think it could go this way?
No, with, the guide wire has to be going, say, this is the wire going across the road, and there's the pole. It has to go in the same direction as that wire going across the road to pull that, because this is pulling this way, it needs to pull in the opposite direction. So, as it's shown on the drawing, that's the direction it needs to go in. I mean, we can, we can deviate just a little bit, but we can't make it go the other way because it's useless, well, not useless, but it's not the way it's supposed to be effectively.
Okay, and the other question I have is, since we're getting the pole on that side, are wires going to be connected, coming from that pole versus across the street?
I don't know what the design and plan was for that, whether it was going to change your wires or not.
Because right now, they go across the roadway, so I was just questioning if, you know, considering there's going to be a pole right there on that side.
Yeah.
Can you get back to us on that?
Yeah, can we find out? So that's at 615, right?
Yeah, 615. And I think that's the only new pole.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a card to give you.
I can, I have a card to give you.
Okay, super.
Okay.
And Stephanie, if you could just sign in on the sheet, is there a sheet up there?
Yeah, there's no-
Oh, if you could sign in, please.
Yeah.
Sometimes the guide wires, if they're behind the tree, you don't notice them as much as if they're sort of way over to the side. I have it on my own property, and the thought of it was a little like, oh wow, that doesn't sound so good. But once it was installed, it sort of just blended in, and the tree kind of took away from it, something to think about.
Which is huge.
Yeah, that is huge.
I mean, originally, they were taking the tree, but the tree has stayed.
So it might, it might be a better look to have it kind of behind that, that tree.
I was just thinking of grass cutting.
Oh, okay.
Okay, there's that.
Any other questions, Stephanie?
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? A lot of folks here tonight, anybody else with comments or questions on this particular open hearing? All right, so what is the board's pleasure on this one? I wrote down four items that I think we want to see. I'd like to see a more accurate drawing that shows us where the repositioning is of the, of the poles. I wrote down that we have a, we would like to see the pole at 591 Mass Ave repositioned so that it's not sitting right in front of a view, either it being in the front door or some kind of a three-room, three-season porch. There was a question about the guide wire at 615. I think you answered it, but let's see if we can just see what the best we can do with that is to get that in a direction that is with the, with the customer's approval. And then the wire connections at 615 to the house, are they going to come across the street or are they going to be on the same street? Were any things that I missed?
No, I think you did a good job.
Very good.
All right, so any other questions? Or any other, last, last chance for comments. Okay. All right, so we're going to close the public, should we leave the public hearing open?
We can close it, please, again.
Okay.
I'll move to-
Well, let me just, before we say, I get the sense that we're not going to be voting tonight, right? So we can still close the hearing and then we can reopen it on the next meeting, okay?
Move to close the public hearing on the joint poll petition of National Grid and Verizon New England to install one new pole and relocate 10 others on Massachusetts Avenue and Chickering Road.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. So we'll see you again. Our next meeting is on the 27th, so we'll-
We'll get a notification from the clerk, right?
Yep.
Yeah, second.
We appreciate any accommodation you can make for this neighbor.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We'll try our best.
Thank you.
Plan before- If there's any changes, yeah, you know, but I would think that this is a petition that we're going to continue with, we're just-
Yeah, so the plans that the state had, the gentleman from the state had, I shouldn't call him the state, the gentleman from the state had, were more accurate in their relocation of the poles. So instead of, so if we could-
You want us to redraw the-
I don't want you to redraw them, no, I'm just wanting, we just want to get a copy of them, a colored copy of them, so we can-
Of what he had?
Of what he had.
Or put a stake in the ground and take a picture.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's another option right there. Or even on this one, if you have this one, if you can give us a, show us where the pole's going to be relocated to. But I think his plan is a little more accurate.
Write a picture of like what we end up dealing with, I mean, it says a thousand words, if I can, if we can have the designer, probably not me, but send it to you. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Nice to see you again.
Okay, so moving forward, next on the agenda, we have government reports. We, first of all, update from the town clerk. Oh, there you are. Hi, Trudy.
I know she was familiar. Good evening, I'm Trudy Reed, the new town clerk.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to give you a few updates of what's been going on over the last couple of weeks since I started, into my third week today. So nomination papers for the annual town election are still available until 5:00 PM on Friday, February 7th. Each person needs to collect at least 50 signatures. Seats up for reelection is the Board of Selectmen, Housing Authority, the Greater Lawrence Vocational School rep, and the school committee. Once they're picked up, they have until Tuesday, February 11th, to be returned. The annual election takes place on Tuesday, March 31st, at the North Andover High School. If you are new to town or you have never registered, the last day to register to vote for this annual election is March 11th. Town clerk's office will be open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM for this voter registration. Early voting for the March 3rd presidential primary is going to be February 24th through the 28th. During normal town hall hours and one late evening on the 25th, we'll be here until 7:00. This is the first time the state has had early voting for a primary, so they're only doing it one week versus what we've been used to the last two presidential elections for two, for two weeks. the last two presidential elections for two, for two weeks. With Lori's help, we both worked with Irene O'Brien of the senior center, and we are now going to have early voting at the senior center. So I'm excited to give that a try. As we get closer, we'll post information on all the details and the dates and things like that on early voting. And just a reminder for anyone who's watching or here tonight, if you have recently moved, you do have 20 days before any election to re-register in a new community. The voter registration does not travel with you. A lot of people seem to think that when you move, it goes with you, but it does not. Dog registration for 2020 is underway. The town clerk's office is now using an outside vendor where dogs can be registered online and paid for online. We've just recently worked with that company, and we've been able to get about 50 tags in our office, so if you don't have access to a computer, you are more than welcome to come in and get the dog tags right at our counter. The annual census is going to be going out this week, so be sure to look for that in your mailbox. A prompt return will help eliminate a second notice being mailed, and don't confuse that with your 2020 federal census, which will be mailed in a couple of weeks. Each annual census and the federal census has its own purpose, benefits to the town and to the state, as well as state representation. I think that's it.
That was quite a bit for you, firstly. So, Trudy, are those, are those dates and information, is that all available on the website and on, on KMPV and...
It will be, yes.
It will be, okay, that'll be helpful.
Right now, all of the election dates and the last day voter registration is on the website and on the notice that the, all the social media you guys do. I'm still trying to learn all that. So all of the election dates for 2020 are already posted. And as soon as I get, I believe we have to confirm with the state where our early voting will take place, so once that's done, I will be sure to post all that information.
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have an update from the Sustainability Committee, or present, I'm sorry, a presentation on a plastic bag ban. Proposed plastic bag ban. Let's be clear about that.
Thank you, I'm Julia Ross, 104 Bridges Lane.
I'm Adrian Goldman, 50 Mill Pond.
And so we want to first thank you for giving us some time on your agenda to talk about a proposed plastic bag ban. Our purpose is to present you with some research that we've done in terms of the impact plastic bags have in the environment, and also to talk about some neighboring towns that have already implemented a, a plastic bag ban, and what kind of worked and didn't work for them. We also want to get some feedback on our proposal, and lastly, we're interested in getting your support in having the town vote on a plastic bag ban. So for people who are not familiar with our committee, there might be some folks here in the room aren't familiar with our committee, what we do is that we are a, kind of a nonpartisan volunteer town committee, and our purpose is to provide resources and education for our residents on resource conservation, waste reduction, and energy efficiency. Some of the activities that we engage in throughout the year is that we promote and try to increase awareness around residential and commercial recycling. We promote, along with the DPW, the sale of rain barrels and compost bins. And we also, starting last year, we applied for and received a $40,000 grant to have a green initiative in our schools. And what we do is we have a program in three of the elementary schools and the middle school, and we promote recycling and composting. And as of, since the beginning of this school year, we have diverted 17,000 pounds of food waste out of our garbage system and into other, other ways in which it can be used. So we're really quite proud of that. So Adrian's gonna talk a little bit about research that we've done, and then we'll talk a little bit more about what we are gonna propose.
So, just to start, I wanna say that I did most of the research, and I, all of my sources are cited. I am very skeptical, I, I double and triple check the facts and the information that I find. Most of it is from either the Sierra Club or massgreen.org, which is an organization that supports green, you know, sustainable state. So, just in case you all don't know, we have more, more of the state's population is living in a town that, that has a plastic bag ban in place. 57% of our state's population is practicing the use of reusable or sustainable bagging when they're shopping. Can you, you can, you have an image here on the, okay. So on the map, you can see, we have, currently, we have 134 cities and towns that have a ban in place. Most of them are in metro, the metro Boston, North Shore, South Shore, and Cape Cod area. How am I, how do I, okay. Thank you. So, one of the reasons for a ban is plastic bags are made from non-renewable fossil fuels. More than 1.6 billion gallons of oil are used annually just to produce plastic bags. Natural gas is also used. Julie is gonna forward for me, okay. So, people say, well, why not, you know, we can recycle plastic bags? Well, it's been proven that only 5.2% of the thin film plastic bags that you get at the grocery store are brought back to the grocery store and put in the bins to be recycled. 100 billion plastic bags are used annually in our country. It costs more to recycle a plastic bag than it actually does to make it. And the biggest thing here in this point is plastic bags are not suitable for municipal recycling systems. You can see in the image, people, they make it into the recycling, even though they're not supposed to, they clog the machines, it costs time and money to citizens, and, you know, that's a problem. So I was able to pull from Mass Green a spreadsheet on calc, the calculations of what we're doing here in North Andover. So, I pulled from US Census that in North Andover, we have roughly 22,000 residents who are age 18 or over. So these citizens are using roughly 11 and a half million plastic bags per year, just here in North Andover. This is all types of plastic bags, not just the single use. And almost 7 million of the thin film grocery bags that you get. And then greenhouse gas is a big deal to me. Just in North Andor, North Andover alone, we produce, just by the use of plastic bags, not the production of plastic bags, we're producing 310 metric ton, tons of carbon dioxide per year. So, plastic waste generation worldwide, the US and Asia are the biggest countries who are producing and using and disposing of plastic bags. It's just a fact. You can do one more, I think there's a picture missing. Yeah. So, environmental wildlife facts from the Sierra Club. Many plastic bags kill animals on land and in sea. They suffocate, they choke, it blocks them, it stars them. 100,000 marine animals are killed by plastic bags annually in the United States. Plastic bags are non-biodegradable. That is a big deal to me. Approximately 8 million metric tons of plastic debris enters the world's oceans each year. Plastic bag production and incineration is a significant contributor to global warming. We, many folks have brought up, well, we don't throw away our plastic bags in North Andover, we incinerate. Well, incineration is an issue as well. I got an EPA report that says 12 million tons of carbon dioxide is released into the environment per year, more than half of which comes from the incineration of plastics. They can clog municipal drainage systems, lead to flooding. Polyethylene is what the bags are made of. They don't break down. It takes them 500 to 1,000 years to break down, and they don't fully break down. They break down into little tiny micro particles that are 5 millimeters or less. They stay, they don't disappear. They stay in our water, they stay in our soil, and they get into our food chain.
And are these pictures from...
Okay, yes, so left side, Turnpike Street, no, left side's Great Pond Road, plastic litter. Right side, Turnpike Street, plastic litter. Microplastics in our health, this is a huge concern to me. As I said a minute ago, the microplastics don't go away. They stay in the land, they stay in the ocean. Tiny little fragments are, you can, if you look at the food chain, they start off, they get into the ocean, they break down. They get into shellfish and bottom crawler, bottom dwellers, and then the fish eat those, and then the birds and the seals eat those, and then we fish the fish, and they're still, they're in our, in our dinner plate. It's on our dinner plate. Or, you know, if it's a whale, the whale eats the turtles and the seals, and it winds up in the whale as well. Okay, let me just, a couple more, because this is, this is my, to me, this is the most important slide. Plastics, like those used for bags and straws, are the second most common plastics to be found in our environment. If you ask me what the first is, it's textiles, it's home carpeting, it's bedding, curtains. But the plastic bags and straws are the second most common to be found. Researchers have now estimated that the average person ingests more than 74,000 micro particles of plastic each year. We don't, you know, we don't have any, you know, I haven't even thought about what kind of diseases and, and long-term illnesses come from that. I don't even want to think about it. Okay, you can go to the next. So, a few members of our committee went out to some surrounding towns, as Julia said, who have bans in place already. We want to know, how is it going? How did, how, how is it working for the small businesses? What do the citizens think? How did you get it passed? Is it convenient, is it inconvenient? So Newburyport is one of the towns. We talked to small businesses, we talked to citizens, we talked to town management people. In Newburyport, the, anything less than 3.0 mils, a mil is a thousandth of an inch, inch. It's a common measurement used in manufacturing. So you know that when you go to the grocery store and you can buy the 10-cent bag, that's typically two and a half to three mils. Those are the heavier plastic. So they banned anything less than three mils. For some reason, restaurants are exempt. Some towns, restaurants are the only ones who passed, who are, have the ban. In Newburyport, the restaurants are exempt. Any of the challenges or concerns in Newburyport? It is a little costly for retailers to buy the paper bags. Some towns in some states mandate a fee that gets passed on to the consumer for the cost of, to the business. Doesn't save natural resources. If they're using paper, it's still not saving natural resources. And then, some of the citizens were concerned about a health hazard if you're using the same bags for food, but you can wash the bags, so I don't see an issue there. Positive impact, less litter, which is a really nice. Newburyport likes being known as an environmentally friendly town. And they, a lot of towns are gathering groups of small businesses to produce reusable bags. They're getting grants, or they're getting their, you know, their business groups to pitch in and produce the bags with logos on them, because then it's handed out to the public for free, and then it's free advertising for the law, small businesses. So you can go, so Haverhill is same thing. They banned anything three mils or less. They, farmers' markets and religious organizations and festivals are exempt. Oh, also establishments under 3,000 square feet, so the smaller businesses don't have to worry about the expense of the paper. A challenge or, in Haverhill, was that the bylaws weren't written clearly, and a lot of the businesses thought there was a mandated 5-cent fee for the bags, for the paper bags. The mayor, you know, got a lot of complaints and quickly amended the bylaws. I spoke personally with the Market Basket manager in Haverhill. He said it was absolutely no problem for these residents. There was a huge reduction in litter. They sold 12,000 reusable bags in the first few weeks when the ban went into place, and he's very happy.
So there are two more towns that we talked to. Andover actually had two bans. They banned the plastic bags with the integrated handle, four mil less. And they just did it for food establishments, not other types of businesses. They also did a ban on, you know, kind of plastic food service paper plates and cups and utensils, so that, now that all has to be bi-degradable and compostable. So that's, they're the only town, in the terms of the ones that we researched, did this type of ban. There really weren't many challenges. I talked to the manager at CVS, and one of her comments was, you know, people, they didn't get any complaints. Their concern was that they had a hard time keeping enough bags in stock, and that for her, the, there weren't, they don't, there weren't big enough bags for any, for some of the larger items that they sell. And then I talked to one of the Andover Dallies, and they were really unhappy. They now have six different-sized paper bags before they just used one plastic bag. They said it takes longer to bag the food. They, the utensils and cups in place they needed to buy were a lot more expensive, so they ended up having to raise their price, and they passed that price on to their customer. I talked to the folks at Stop &amp; Shop, and they said the transition's been really easy. I think the first two weekends, they gave a bunch of bags away. And there, there was really little pushback in Andover, because they've passed similar bylaws like this in the past, and I think it passed like 95% of the population voted yes for it. And then the last town we looked at was Tewksbury, a very similar, the, it was to ban bags with integrated handles, three mil or less. Some of the challenges was around enforcement, so who's gonna make sure that particularly the smaller businesses are complying with the, the new ban? And there were some comments around it being a slippery slope, so their concern was, well, what are they gonna ban next year? Is it gonna be straws? And then what is it gonna be? So there was some, some concern around that. And then there was also some pushback, so it was brought up again to repeal the ban, but it was easily defeated. And many of the residents felt that there was no excuse not to do this. This is just what we should be doing. And people who exercised outside made comments that there's less trash in, in public spaces in places where people exercise outside. So our recommendation, looking at the four towns we researched and other research that we've done, is we want to ban the thin film bags, three mil or less, that have the integrated handles at all retail establishments in North Andover.
And food.
And food, yes. An alternative would be just to ban the thin film, single use only, instead of saying it has to be anything under three mil. So that's an alternative, but we're advocating that we do any plastic bag less than three mil. So what are the options for the residents? Well, one is, and for the... The businesses, one is, you know, that we're gonna be using recyclable paper bags. It's up to the establishment whether or not they want to charge a fee or not. I think all the towns and cities that we looked in, I don't think they're charging a fee. So, as I said, some of the, some increased their prices in the food establishments, but I don't think anyone is actually charging a fee. And then the other option is to use reusable checkout bags. And so our, our vision is that we come to a point where everybody is, we're no longer using paper bags, and that everybody is using a reusable bag to carry their goods home from stores. So there will still be other bags that are allowed, so kind of the thinner film bags that don't have handles, dry cleaning bags, bags that are, you get your newspaper and ice bags. So bags that are normally used to either contain or prevent moisture, those would still be allowed. And so what is it like today in North Andover? So in my very unscientific polling I did, every time I went to Market Basket, I asked the cashiers and the people bagging, so what percent of people bring their own bags? And I would say, on average, they said it was about 30%. There are a number of retailers that only use paper products now, Stachy's, a couple of the restaurants, Golden Seal, Apothecary. We talked to the folks at Butcher Boy and J&amp;M, who do use a lot of plastic bags, and they are kind of both on board, and, you know, didn't, they seem to be supportive, and the... And the folks at J&amp;M anticipated that they're probably going to increase their price of their food to cover the cost of the paper products. And then in terms of other food establishments that don't use plastic right now, Panera, Tripoli, and Be Good. And then there are a number of businesses in our town that already have stores in other towns that have bag bans in place. So, we're assuming that the transition for them should be pretty easy. So, what are some of the challenges that we might experience in North Andover, based on what we know about our town and what we researched from the other towns? One has to do with cost. I mean, it costs money to produce and get reusable bags. We're thinking maybe the seniors and residents on fixed incomes, it might be a hardship for them. So, one of the things we want to do is apply for a grant and get some bags that are reusable, and provide those to the people who are in most need. The Stop &amp; Shop in Andover gave away probably about five thousand bags when they first started. So, we're going to also work with the primary grocery stores to see if they can also provide bags. Another challenge, as we mentioned with the J&amp;M, is that there could be increased cost to the retailers. And as I said, our goal is really promote reusable bags. So, hopefully, over time, their costs will go down, because there are going to be more and more people of our residents here in North Andover who are going to be using reusable bags. And so, again, our big thing is we're promoting reusable bags. We're hoping we might have some businesses want to sponsor a bag. And, you know, they can advertise on the bag, and we'll find ways to create opportunities to give these bags away. And then this is just an example from Tewksbury about how they were kind of educating their residents about what, what the ban means. So, we would certainly do something similar like this to be really clear about, well, what are we banning? And what's allowed? And what are your options now? And I think that's it. So, do you have any questions or comments or feedback about what we're thinking about proposing?
First of all, thank you.
You're welcome.
For all the work that you both put into the presentation and the research, and on your own time and going out and talking to all those businesses, it was really, really fantastic. I think, you know, personally, we try to minimize the use of plastic bags in my house. And we try to use, you know, we boxes or paper at stores. So, I think it's, you know, in alignment with, with my own personal thinking, so I'm, I'm supportive of the idea. Obviously, this would have to go through town meeting and get town meeting approval. It's not something that we can alone decide on, and then, you know, we'll have to, it'll have to be presented to the town, and we'll see what day, what everyone thinks. But I think, you know, I personally am supportive of the idea. I think it's a great idea.
And other comments or questions?
I have a few concerns. Mainly, paper bags are sometimes difficult to work with, especially for the elderly and handicapped. I'm also concerned that have we taken into account, paper bags are heavy, and they take more storage space. Have you made an accounting for the transportation costs and all of that that would be involved with this heavier product? I mean, it, you know, it sounds good, but I think I, for me, I need to see real facts, real numbers, comparing one to the other. I've been recycling before it was chic. I did it for more cost-effective ways when you're raising a young family. So, believe me, we're big recyclers at our house. We switch to cloth diapers because of the landfills, and we don't do bottled water. I do do this, but, you know, and I can go on and on and on. Almost everything in my house
That's great.
has been used before. It's either antiques or whatever. We're big recyclers, so I'm really supportive of that. But I just want to make sure we're dealing with real numbers and real facts, so that it, it sounds good. But again, the weight of the paper in the landfills, the cost to the town, is considerably more than a thin bag. And I really do have concerns about people where the paper bags are cumbersome, and they do rip. I mean, I, we've all used them, the handles come off and they do rip. So, I'm a little bit concerned about that for, you know, elderly and handicapped, that it might be a little bit difficult for them to manipulate. So, those are my main questions. I'm not opposed to it, I'm not in favor of it. I just need to learn more, just to see, are we dealing with real facts and numbers? You know, of course, with paper, I know you recycle paper, but, you know, are we taking down trees?
That's right, yeah.
Personally, we recycle our plastic bags, whether it's for the, the dog, or line trash cans and things like that in our house. So, we, we do recycle the plastic. So, I, I just, I really want to have some really solid facts, and I think the town would as well.
Great.
If I could just speak for a minute, I can touch on the paper, the issue of the paper. Because paper bags, there are many environmental concerns for paper as well as plastic. It's more expensive, they're, as you said, they're bigger. They take up more space in a landfill. There can't fit as many of them on a truck to drive to deliver.
Or storage in the facility.
Right. So, the question is not plastic versus paper. We will certainly do the research and get the facts that you need for the paper. But the question should never be, is it paper or is it plastic? We want to promote reusable bags.
And that's great, but I think we also have to report, we want to propose reusable bags with real knowledge. People need to wash those.
Yes.
If you're bringing in dairy products or meat, you could easily be contaminating your
Yeah, they're washable.
So, you kind of have to take into account, so now we're washing those. Where does that fit into the equation of good environment and recycling and so forth and so on? But you, you have to wash them, or they're going to get, people are going to get sick. So, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot in play here. And I think, for me, I really need to know solid facts to see where we really land on all of this. And I might be a little bit more open to the fact that for elderly and handicap, perhaps they don't have to participate in the plastic bags, or lighter and easier. I don't know, just something to think about.
Okay.
I was actually going to ask that question, if, in any of the research, if you found any towns have an exception for elderly people?
I don't, I did not read any of that.
The elderly people, the cloth bags, most of the towns organized a giveaway. And they brought them to the senior center. And so, they were, there are many retired and fixed income citizens who were given bags. The cloth, and, and even if they're made of plastic, but they're heavy plastic bags with the sewn-on handles, are wonderful, because they're lightweight and they don't rip. And the people, the elderly people can carry, they can, if it's too, you know, you can load more groceries into those bigger bags. But they just don't load as many groceries in, so they can carry them by the handles. They don't have to carry them underneath. And they're working well, and from, from what, you know, from what I've seen and come across in my research. They're, they're working.
What's fascinating to see is that over half the state population is already dealing with it. So, it, it's like sort of when recycling hit twenty years ago, right? And we had a lot of questions, had to figure it out, but the reality is it's here. Countries around the world are banning this, huge countries. Because the reality is that the plastic that we've been recycling actually doesn't get recycled. I just saw a statistic today, something like six percent of the plastic bags that we all put in our little recycle bin, only six percent of those actually get recycled. So, from a, a true environmental impact, the fact that we're still using plastic bags and recycling, we're not really doing ourselves any, any justice with this. So, I think, to me, some of the questions posed here and sort of going forward is, there are trade-offs in life. And there, there are going to be trade-offs. And the reality is figuring out how to best deal with it. But from a practical standpoint, the, the message has already been received, I think, across the state and really around the world, which is these, we have to find an alternative to this and figure out how to integrate that with some of the limitations. And the retailers, because the other part of this is that the retailers and the folks that are providing the goods, they have to embrace this. And they can be, they can be advocates and intelligent for this. And what really struck me is that we already have some very well-known enterprises here in town that have already decided to embrace this. And I think those are the folks that can help us kind of educate and, and understand this a little better, because they've already embraced it. And I think that's, you know, part of the challenge, which is moving from being an, an early adopter to being with the crowd. And as a state, we've moved from being early adopters to being with the crowd. It's our town's opportunity really now to move with the crowd. So, I, I'm really pleased that this has been organized in, in the way it has and the research behind it. Obviously, there are a lot of other questions and education has to go forward. But, you know, this is one of the things, actually, selectmen, Decollegaron, are talking about this earlier today. It's great to see folks from the community come forward and say, this is what we'd like to do. Because it's not, you know, we're the, we're the board, but ultimately, you're the community. And it's really the folks, the population of North Andover, that's in a position to say, what do we want to do as a town? So, it's really great to see a bunch of residents pull this idea together and organize it and, and take the lead on itself. All the best for them.
One more bit of information, if you have it available, is the, the life cycle impact between paper and plastic.
The life cycle impact, can you be more specific?
Basically, you know, how, how long does it take to decompose? How does it fit into, whether it be a landfill, but the town of North Andover, we, we burn.
We incinerate, right, yeah. Well, I mean, part of the, part of the research that I did is, it takes five hundred to a thousand years for plastic to decompose, and it never fully decomposes.
Is it all plastic, or?
All plast-
Even the, even the, the thin bags? I, I hear what you're saying, and I don't disagree with that. I would imagine that plastic would take longer than, than paper, but I'm just, I don't know if all plastic is the same, meaning
I mean, I would have to look into plastic bottles and toys and, you know, everything that gets through.
Because those, I think, common sense would tell you would take longer than perhaps this type of bag.
Right. And then paper, I can look into, but it's, I think, you know, I think it takes a newspaper about a year to completely decompose. So, paper, I mean, I can do the research, the paper bags don't take
I just think the
Oh, certain paper, some paper is compostable as well, yeah.
I just think it's, it just would be helpful if we had real solid facts and information in comparison and alternatives.
I have one other question. I'm curious if you came across this information. Because I've read a few, tried to do some research and read some articles on this myself when other towns started banning bags. This was a couple of years ago. But there were arguments proposed that if you ban single-use bags, people will just buy bags to pick up after their dog and line their trash barrels and whatever. So, they're not getting them from the grocery store, but they're buying them, so they're still going to be out there. I kind of think that's a bit ridiculous, because not every, not a hundred percent of people have dogs, and a hundred percent of the people are going to the grocery store. So, it's certainly going to be less anyway. But I'm just curious if you came across any kind of figures that would say, yes, there was an increase in the purchase of plastic bags, but it was minimal, it was this big compared to this amount of bags that are being given away for free or whatever, just something that would support, I guess, my theory that, okay, maybe some people buy additional bags, but it's not enough to warrant not doing this. It's not so substantial that you shouldn't ban the bags in the first place, but I'm just assuming that. So, I'm just curious if you have any research that would back that up.
I don't think there are specific numbers, but there are a lot of compostable dog bags and other kind of bags that you can buy that are compostable. So, that certainly is better for the environment than just the plastic.
But do we have any numbers on that?
Not hard numbers, but I was going to say the same thing Julia did. They sell compostable or biodegradable bags for your dog and for your, for your trash.
Your dog owners can tell me about that.
You don't want to compost, you don't want to compost your dog poop, but biodegradable.
Bags for the dog.
Yeah. And Yeah, because you're still throwing away the plastic.
We use them for the trash, right, so we feel as though, you got to have them, you might as well recycle with
Right. But as Chris was saying, it's, there's a, there's a cost that we all have to acknowledge and recognize if we want to protect our environment. And so, if it's buying biodegradable bags for the dog or for the trash, that's something that we need to really consider.
Now, the plastic bags that we do get in the grocery store, you can get them at wherever we go, Marshalls, TJ Maxx, are any of those compost, compostable? No, they're not.
I will tell you, Burlington has a ban, and I went to the Burlington Mall, and they had heavy plastic bag at the, you know, at the clothing stores. They are now using the heavy plastic bags that say they're made of a certain percent of recyclable material and
You can use them a hundred and twenty-five times.
Yeah, you can use them a hundred and twenty-five times. And so, it's, they're still using the plastic, but they're more, they're complying with, ooh, whatever the bylaws are in the town, yeah.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
I just think we, and you've done your homework, but I think we just really need to have hard, hard facts that compare the two. And I liked what you said, Julia. You were pretty honest about the different responses from, you know, you told the good and the bad, and good for you for doing that. Not that you didn't, but you did more than you know.
It's important to know, we need to address the challenges with our local business people.
And our residents.
And our residents, yeah.
The only thing is, we do have to be very mindful of the cost. We did kind of all just come through a tough time for our merchants in this area. We don't want to give people another excuse to shop in New Hampshire as well.
Yeah, it's a big, the passing the five cent fee on to the consumer is a big issue everywhere.
That's an issue, yeah.
It is, it just is. It's, and, and people are undecided about it. There are states that have bans that pass a fee or don't pass the fee on to the consumer.
But I think we do need to be mindful that we do have a, a state right near us, which has great shopping and no tax. And we had, I really want to be mindful of the merchants not taking that, I get on this.
I agree.
So, I'd like to acknowledge, Mr. Chairman, for anybody who's watching at home. This is not a nonprofit or private group. We, as a town in North Andover, appointed a sustainability committee to research these type of topics. And there probably are quite a few familiar faces, but just to put this in perspective, how many committee members are in this room right now from the sustainability committee here for this evening? I mean, this is a group that packs the town hall conference room once a month with several different subcommittees. And we heard at the beginning of the presentation, everything that they're diving into for this particular topic. I just think for any other people watching who are on committees, like, I'm, I am very impressed with the way that you, as a committee, have followed approaching this, where you've done your research, you want to bring this before town meeting. You went a full year into researching this. Now, you're back before the Board of Selectmen pitching this idea and asking for our feedback, so you can go take that idea, refine it in the work as a committee to bring it to town meeting. I think that's exactly how I think ideally we want government to work.
I agree a hundred percent. Thank you, guys. I think that's very well done.
And I, I will just throw anecdotally, as someone who has been part of a group handing out fifteen thousand farmers market bags over the past three years, this year, there was a noticeable drop-off in the number of people who would even take the bags, because everybody has reusable. And I say everybody, but quite a number of people has, have reusable bags to the point that they're, they refuse them. Some people collect them, but it's funny how many come and don't necessarily come with the green bags. So, if you want any, I've got My wife would very much like to get rid of some of the boxes in my garage, so. But thank you for, for your work, and to the rest of the committee for doing your due diligence in other communities, but also in North Andover to find out what the good and the bad would be. I just, I, the statistic that jumped out most to me was that a community two towns over, Tewksbury, very similar to us, socioeconomically passed it, and then when given the opportunity to repeal it, chose not to. And so, I didn't know that statistic, so I appreciate that.
And also, every town that has put this up, it's passed.
No town has, has ever had it defeated.
Hundred and thirty-four towns.
Anything else?
Thank you. Well, anything else from us?
Just in terms of next steps. So, I'm assuming we work with the town attorney to draft the bylaw, and then do we come back to you guys, or what, what do we do?
And look at my town manager and
Oh, hi.
I can give them to you, but they may not be accurate, so I'd rather have it come from an expert.
If you can get in contact with me, we can start working with you. I, I don't know if you have, you haven't started a draft yet, right?
We have samples.
You have a sample draft, okay. If you get in contact with me, I can certainly start working with you on the drafting. Obviously, the warrant will be opened fairly soon, so it's something we, if you're planning on going for this meet town meeting, we're going to want to work on quickly. So, if you want to get in contact with me, I can get that moving for you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
My question is, would this be submitted as a citizens petition? Is that how that would?
They can actually submit it from their committee.
From the committee, okay.
It doesn't require a lot of work, a lot of signatures for a regular town meeting.
Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the other members of the committee that are here tonight as well for
Julie and I didn't do this alone. We had a lot of help from all of the people, so, on our committee. Thank you.
I will give people a few seconds to funnel out if they'd like. While they're doing that, we'll take our non-substantial items here. We'll go through the approval of our minutes. We have two meetings to approve. Can I hear a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the open session minutes of December
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the open session minutes of December 16th, 2019, as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or concerns? All those in favor? Aye. Close. Okay.
Move the Board of Selectmen approve the open session minutes of the December 27th, 2019, meeting as presented.
Motion, since it was only limited attendance there, yeah, I think we should probably just vote those members who were there unless you were able to watch the recording. Actually, I don't believe it was recorded. So I think we should just have the three members present vote on this one.
Well, they transferred the license already, so hopefully the minutes accurately reflect that.
Yes.
I would motion approval of the minutes as presented.
I think a motion was already made. We need a second, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. I'm staying.
I'm staying.
Okay. 302. All right. So we're trying something different with consent items to kind of expedite the process. So normally, consent items are taken as a group. That's the intent of the consent items. So we are going to try that, taking them as a group. But I am going to offer that if anybody is here to speak to any one of those items from the audience, then I would give them the opportunity, we will pull them out of consent items and hear those folks, or if Sue Park is here or anybody. Okay, well, there we go. So I am going to motion that we take two items out of consent item, or I would like to hear a motion, I should say, that I would like to take two items out of the consent items, A and B, and we'll take those as, Melissa, we'll take those as new business.
I would just, just ask that we at least list them, so people at home who don't always have an agenda know what we are, you know.
Sure, we can, we can read each one of them and-
Yeah, and then do it as one vote.
Okay.
I think it's fair, especially when there's donations and things, it's kind of nice to do that.
Okay, so I have, do we-
But you've got to separate. You're separating this, so that's fine.
Okay, so we have a mo-, motion to take two items out of consent. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, so where do we end up putting these? Are these just like free-floating now? Okay. Okay, Sue, well, thank you for coming tonight, and you-
I have, I've never done this here, so I have no idea what you're saying.
So first thing is, you have a sign, you have a sign, you have a sign-in sheet in front of you.
Okay, yep.
Okay, and then you can sign into that, and then what you, what we want you to do is just walk us through the two proposals or the two requests that you have, and what would you like?
Okay, so I'm looking to organize two different road races in the town of North Andover. The first one I'm looking to organize is actually for the YMCA. I'm a fitness instructor there, and I'm also what's called a Live Strong instructor, which means that, well, they basically have a Live Strong program, which is for cancer survivors. I will be running the next session for them, which starts on the 28th, but that program is a 12-week program that cancer survivors can come in, take the session for free, they have free use of the gym, and we basically just help them increase their, their muscle strength, their, their energy, their endurance. We have people that could be 20 years cancer-free to people who are stage four. So I've worked with many different people, cancer survivors. It's a great program, but because it's free, we have to, we have to raise funds for it. So every single year, we have an event where basically for the weekend, we cancel all regular classes and we kind of hold some specialty classes. I usually do a big spin class, I've helped them do a dry triathlon, but I've been telling them for a couple of years, like, we should really do a 5K. Like, we should, we should do a 5K to help raise funds to help support the program. And it's something that they said that they've wanted to do for a while. So that's the first one. We were looking at Sunday, May 31st. Basically, all the proceeds for that would go towards helping support their Live Strong program. Live Strong is something that's offered four times a year. So we have a winter, spring, summer, and fall session. And like I said, it's offered for free, so they have to be able to have the funds to, to do it. I don't know if you guys have the map, but I, I mapped out a 3.1 mile route that would start and finish by that field next to Drummond Park. So it would come out of Milk Street, go up Johnson Street, take a right onto Ray Street, then you go back onto Chestnut Street, and then back onto Milk Street. So it's just one big loop. I also did talk to Lieutenant Dan Lannan, who used to take spin with me, the Y, but I actually sat down with both of my routes with him. We discussed having about five police detail on the course, and looked at May 31st on a Sunday morning as a runner myself. Of course, you know you're a runner, you probably know on a Sunday morning, any given time of the year, especially in the summer and the spring, there's, tends to be less traffic on the road anyway. It's my favorite time to run, because there's less cars on the road. And we would look to have approximately 300 runners. I've organized my own road race in Haverhill the last two years, and typically, even with the walkers, it's, people are finished within an hour, maybe an hour and 10 minutes. So we would have people probably off the road, maybe a little more than an hour, and then just have sort of like the after-party on the field. So that's the first one. The second one is, is I've, like I said, have put on my own road race for the last two years at Willow Springs Vineyards in Haverhill, Mass. It's called Run for Wine 5K. So I've had a lot of people that have said, I've never run, run a 5K before, but I will run for wine. And it's been really successful. I had a substantial increase in runners this past August than I had had the first year. But most of my runners and my following and my sponsors reside here in North Andover. Salem Five Bank sponsored me, Eva's Farm has sponsored me. They sponsored all of my food, so they've showed up with a tent and a grill, and they've done free food for everybody. Passion Nails, ladies, I don't know if you go there, but Passion Nails, Freshy Face, the YMCA sponsored me this past year, and I would just really love to move the race to the town where I live in and where I do, where I teach and, and all of that. And I had spoken with Joanna at Stevens Estate several times, and she said that she would love to host the race there. So for the route for that one, it would start and finish, it's a lollipop route, it would start and finish right in front of the estate. They would run down the hill, they'd go up Osgood Street, they would take a left onto Academy Lane, a left onto Court Street, right back onto Osgood, and then they'd all have to run right back up to the estate, which, I know, I'm so mean.
Heartbreak Hill.
Heartbreak Hill. Well, it's funny, because my route in Haverhill, where we started and finished at Willow Springs, was a hill. So they kind of come out of the vineyard, they take a left, they go up the hill, and they go down, and they have to go back up again. So I'd be changing it on them, but they'd still have to, they'd have to work for their wine, essentially. Also a 5K, so 3.1 miles. And when I spoke with Dan Lannan, we, we agreed that for both races, about five police detail at certain spots was appropriate for both races. I think that's it.
And so what would you do with the wine, like, there's like a party at the Stevens Estate after where people drink wine?
Yes. So we're at Willow Springs, obviously, they're a vineyard, and they, they offered, they had their own wine. I know that Joanna said that they, you know, obviously, they have access to wine, but I've also thought about partnering with, I don't know if anyone's ever heard of Fit Vine? You can buy it at the wine store that's in Stop &amp; Shop now. But they're, it's like sulfite-free, and it's sort of supposed to be like a fit-friendly, healthy-friendly wine. I actually gave it to my oldest daughter's kindergarten, kindergarten teachers for Christmas. They said it was delicious. I actually, I had volunteered in, I had volunteered in the class, I was like, what do you ladies want for, for Christmas? Like, oh, don't worry about it. I'm like, no, really, what do you want for Christmas? They're like, we like wine. I'm like, done. So I bought them that. I was, it's like, you know, it's, their logo is a runner with a wine glass. I'm like, this is perfect, this is perfect for me. So like, but, so obviously, I would either have to figure out the wine portion for this one, but I do know that Joanna was really excited about hosting it. It's also, I think, in terms of my race, it's a great way to attract more people. I've had people from Florida, Vermont, New Hampshire, all over. I'm going to have to go back to my own, the last two years, but I've had people from all over run my race, to be honest. Most of them are in this area, but I think it's a great way, it was a great way for the last two years for Willow Springs to basically advertise. People are like, I had no idea this place was here. And oddly enough, Willow Springs and Stevens Estate compete with each other for weddings. So I think it's a great way to sort of bring some, I don't know, recognition to Stevens Estate. It's a beautiful property, I've wanted to do something there for so long, and I would, personally, would just love to, to move it there. I think it's a great spot for it. So, and yes, I would have music, so I, hi Lori, by the way, it's nice to meet you in private, we've chatted over the phone. But I would, I would have, for my race, I have a DJ that, it's not like a live band or anything, but he plays music and he's, you know, he does all the, he gets, he's, he's super fun. He's got dreads and he's, he's very fun, but he does, he gets, he gets-
On the first one, you said a party, so this, we're talking about Drummond Field, right?
Yes.
So what, explain to me what a party entails.
Well, just, I mean-
There wouldn't be wine there, right?
No, no. No, no, no wine, no beer, nothing like that, just where people kind of hang out. I mean, would probably have refreshments, water, sports drinks, bananas, things like that. And there would probably be, yes, it'd be music, but no live, you know, just, you know, a DJ playing some sort of, of music.
And you'd have responsibility for all the cleanup and everything.
Oh, yeah. Yep. I was responsible for all the cleanup at Willow Springs, too. It's a lot of work. It's fun, though, I, I don't know, I enjoy it. I enjoy, I really enjoy bringing people together, especially when it has, if it's for a good cause, it's for fitness. I just like to motivate people to move, to get outside. By the way, I really liked what you guys had to say, because I'm a runner and there's a lot of trash on the road. And that was, it was a really good point. I just thought I would bring that up. But yeah, I, I like to get people moving and outside and just bring the community together. And I've, I've said this to Chris a few times, I know Chris from running, I just want to do more with the town in terms of getting people together and promoting healthy, active lifestyles.
Thank you, Senator.
Yeah, you're welcome. We talked about this on Thanksgiving at the Feaster Five.
Any other questions from the board?
No, it's the right distance.
It is.
And good destinations, both.
Yes.
Okay, so do we have a motion then?
Yeah. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Close. Okay. You're all set, thank you very much.
Sorry, I'm just signing in.
Okay.
I'm so, I'm nervous, I'll get better.
So is there anybody else? Is Carol Brass Street here? I don't see Carol here. Okay, so the other items we have under consent would, would be to accept a grant, accept the grant for $7,181 for turnout gear. Also, a request from Carol Brass Street to use Drummond Park on Saturday, May 16th, from 8:00 to 12, 2:00 p.m. for the Great Strides Cystic Fibrosis Walk. And also to accept a donation from Elizabeth Armstrong in the amount of $500 for the Fire Department to be used for equipment. Vote to waive the right of first refusal on an affordable unit resale at 180 Trickery Road, Unit 303C, and also to accept the grant in the amount of $11,700 from Mass DEP for recycling programs. Well, timely.
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval on all those that you had read and letters of thanks for the donations, and, I guess that's it?
Okay, a motion and a second. And also, letter of thanks, well, not letter, but just thanks to whoever had the foresight to apply for those grants and to get $11,000 for recycling program, whoever on the staff did that, thank you, and as well as the Fire Department grant for $7,000. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Close. Okay. Whipping through consent. All right, new business. So we are not going to take the vote tonight on the National Grid of Verizon poll petition. Next, we have the appointment of Jean Erwin to the Stevens Estate Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chairman, Jean was quite impressive, actually. She came to meet with Selectman Nobley and I. She serves currently as the Assistant Business Manager for the Tewksbury Public School System. And so while she's relatively new to North Andover, she brings a depth of knowledge when it comes to working in the municipal setting. And so by her serving on this advisory committee, and I think that we all agree that one of the, the impetus, at least initially for this past town meeting, was the complications that we think come along with owning a facility like this as a public entity. And so I think that she has a strong understanding of the pitfalls and would be a resource to those committee members, was they brainstorm ideas overall with how that facility should function. And so I, I would motion her appointment to fill one of the two remaining open seats on that advisory board.
And I would just add one other thing. She's the only person that we interviewed that walked in with spreadsheet, with all this analysis on it. I know, very, we could hear ding, ding, ding in the background. But it was, but that was on top of all of what, you know, Selectman Decollet said, really thinking about it and bringing that experience. It was really impressive to have somebody like that on the committee.
So would you like to second the motion?
I will second that.
She was in my purchasing class, last purchasing class that I take, and she had very thoughtful questions and was very impressive, so I was happy to see her get involved.
Oh, good.
Awesome.
A known person. So we have a motion and a second. Any comments, other comments? All those in favor? Aye. All right. Appoint Board of Selectmen representatives to the Master Planned Implementation Committee. So we went through these appointments and appointed members of our board to many committees, but we neglected to appoint somebody, I believe, to the Master Plan Implementation Committee. So, that being said, we need to rectify that situation tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I, I was asked by Selectman Nobley, and so I have no problem making a motion to appoint him as our representative, and I think that he's been somebody who's just been especially passionate when talking about our master plan, and I appreciate your willingness to dive in with the depth of work that's ahead of us, to make sure it's actually implemented.
I will second that. You are constantly talking about it, so I feel it's very appropriate for you.
You know what you asked for? Is that what you're telling me?
That's right.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. I'm, I'm totally in favor of that as well. I know, Chris, you've been passionate about the master plan since many, many years, so I, I'm totally in favor of that as well. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Close. All right, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we might have missed number C, or letter C.
I believe I did. And I had it checked off and everything, and I missed it. All right, letter, now, letter C is the appointment of Trevor Lalibert as our tree warden.
Yes.
So I'll turn to you for the-
Sure, so it has come to our attention that we do not currently have an appointed tree warden here in town, and under Master General Law, we are required to have one. So we, we actually don't have anyone currently working for the town that is qualified to be the tree, the tree warden. You have to be an oborist by law now, and have basically become an active member of the Tree Warden and Forestry Association, and have certain qualifications in place. the Tree Warden and Forestry Association, and have certain qualifications in place. Unfortunately, none of our employees do, and that is not a, that is not something that is uncommon. This is a very common thing to have happen. So Trevor Lilibert, he was actually, I faced the same situation, it's like the Twilight Zone, 10 years ago in Everett, and we appointed Trevor as our tree warden there, under circumstance, no. So when we realized what was happening, we gave him a call, asked him if he would come in and meet with the team here, and they're very excited to bring him on board as a contractor, as our tree warden. So we do have several outstanding hearings right now that have been waiting for a tree warden to come on board, namely the Mass Ave project. So we'd like to appoint Trevor today and then bring the Mass Ave tree hearing before your next meeting, after he's able to do a full evaluation of those trees.
Now, does he have an educational experience?
He does. He, he does. He has a resume in here. So he owns a landscaping company, and he has been the Everest in Everett since 2012. He also has a really interesting background, working with children and getting them into nature and the environment. And he's an urban forest strike, strike team stack, task specialist. So if you have a rec, like a hurricane or an ice storm, he's someone who comes in and does recovery for trees, interestingly. He's a very interesting person. But he also has his tree injection certificate, his horticulture associate's degree, he is a certified oborist from the Massachusetts Oborist Association, he has a tree risk assessment qualification, a tree appraisal qualification, he's a registered consulting oborist with the American Society of Consulting Oborists, he has an invasive plant management degree from the University of Massachusetts, an invasive insect management degree, he's a certified grounds technician, and as of 2019, he was named as a Massachusetts qualified tree warden.
Sounds good.
He's very impressive.
So certainly something we need, as we, as Town Manager stated, we had a few hearings that we really needed a tree warden to chime in on, so this is filling a gap that we have currently.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we appoint Trevor Lilibert as tree warden for a term ending January 12th, 2023.
I would second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next, we have to sign the purchase and sales agreement for the Glenny Woodlot. So-
Can Town Councils here to speak on this as well?
Okay.
This was a result of the May town meeting, where we voted to appropriate $200,000 from CPC for this purchase, but it's very complicated, and so I asked her to come to further explain it.
Thank you.
Yeah, so before you use the purchase and sale agreement for the Glenny Woodlot, the town meeting vote is also attached to the purchase and sale agreement. It's, it's a straightforward real estate transaction. The town, the lots being purchased for $250,000, Green Belt is donating $50,000 of that. At this, the closing, the town will be designated holding the title, and green, the town will then convey out a green, a conservation restriction to Green Belt. The conservation restriction is not before you tonight to be voted on because it's first going to the Conservation Commission, and they're going to review it, and they'll approve it, and then recommend it to you at the meeting of the 27th. And the closing is scheduled to take place on January 31st.
Okay.
Question about conservation restrictions and the authority. So we were, we, town meeting was asked to place a conservation restriction on the land around the Stevens Estate. But we're being asked and given authority as a Board of Selectmen to be able to grant a conservation restriction on the Green Belt piece, or on the Glenny's property.
So the town meeting vote for this property was to do just that. It was to accept, to purchase the property and then convey a conservation restriction.
Do you already have that authority?
You already have that authority. You have the authority from the town meeting vote to accept the $50,000 grant to be used for the purchase price, to accept the parcel, and to also convey out the conservation restriction. Okay? Yep.
Any other questions or comments? So this is really just sealing up that act of town meeting, right?
Yes, yes.
So we, town meeting approved this, we're just-
You're just, it's completely consistent with that town meeting vote that is attached to the PNS agreement.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I motion to move into licensing.
Second.
Okay. Your motion and a second, move to licensing. Any comments? All those in favor? All right.
Okay, we only have one thing on our licensing agenda, which is what we discussed in a meeting, I think it might have been two meetings ago, I'm not quite sure. Hopefully y'all remember. There was a section on police details that specified some periods that we might waive police details weddings or in the morning or whatever, but the language was slightly unclear, so we agreed that we would change the language to just say, "At their discretion," meaning the Licensing Commission. "The commission, after consultation with public safety, may waive the requirement for a police detail." So that was, it used to say, "For weddings or morning events," or something like that. So we were just clarifying that. Any, does everyone remember any discussion on that?
They don't remember, and I think that's pretty clear wording, and it makes, it leaves it open for our discretion, as it says, so that we can assign police or not, so depending on the event.
I'm good with it. So I'll make a motion to approve, yeah, move the Board of Selectmen acting as License Commissioner, has approved the revisions to the Town of North Andover Alcoholic Beverages Regulation, Section 5F, as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Before we move out of licensing, I guess I would share also, if you will recall, in our meeting in December, we renewed the Stevens Coolidge Place Entertainment License for one month, giving them the opportunity to speak with neighbors and come up with a plan for basically appeasing some of the neighbors' concerns. We unfortunately had an error on our side and didn't adequately communicate that to Stephen Coolidge Place with a cover letter or whatnot, so they didn't really understand that. So in all fairness, I think we owe them a little bit more time. We didn't make it on this agenda, but in our next meeting agenda, I would like to put that we will give them another month extension on that license, so that they have from now until the end of February to work with the neighbors in good faith, since that was frankly our, our mistake.
An extension motion?
No, because this wasn't on the agenda, so it's going to be on the next meeting agenda, but I just wanted to explain it to everyone in this meeting, so you know what's happening.
Okay, that's fair.
Okay.
All right.
Motion to move out of licensing?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Okay. So we'll go to the Town Manager's report, the job vacancy.
Sure. So we have just posted a Support Services Coordinator position in the Youth and Rec Department, and so I think I just approved that acquisition today, but it's been recently posted on our website, social media, in nd.com, so people who are interested in that position should certainly apply. It's a great department to work for. And we hired a new department assistant in the Treasurer Clerk's office, who apparently is left and now is baby back. And so that's exciting. So her name is Deb Foriello. And I believe that's really all we have out there right now. We do have a part-time night weekend library assistant position that has been posted as well. That's it.
Thank you. And then we're also going to have a budget update tonight.
Yes. So this will be quick. I just wanted to reiterate, I know you all received my letter stating that the school committee, or the school superintendent had recommended a budget that is higher than the town managers recommended. Superintendent Gilligan and I met this morning, we're meeting again tomorrow morning with the school committee chair and vice chair. We're working together to try to find solutions and find consensus and bridge that gap. So I would just ask if you'd give us to the next meeting and continue working on that, and I will be in touch and give you updates as we move through that process. Okay? Thank you. And I have a couple other updates, if you don't mind, unless there's anything else on the budget. Okay. We did receive the GFOA award today for the distinguished budget presentation, so congratulations to Lynn Savage, very exciting. We're very proud of her. This is her eighth year in a row receiving that award. There's plenty of municipalities, I can tell you, that do not receive that award, so we should be really proud of that. We did hear from the governor that we are receiving a supplemental amount of $81,668 in Chapter 90. So that's pretty exciting. They released supplemental budget, so that will allow us to do probably at least one more project, and so we're excited about that. On January 16th at 7:00 PM at the Senior Center, we're having our first public information meeting on the gas emergency road restoration. So that's going to be an introductory meeting on the project status, with an opportunity for residents to meet key project personnel and voice any concerns they have. We're talking a lot about the construction, we're talking a lot about the schedule, we're making some final revisions to the project website, and we'll be launching that later this week. But we want people to know about that meeting, so that's January 16th at 7:00. And I think that that's important, and I hope that we'll see a lot of people there. It's the first meeting, there will be more, but this is the first one. And then I did want to let you know that we're going to be trying something different with the warrant. Instead of, I would like to try something different with the warrant. Instead of opening and closing at every meeting, I'd like to open it, leave it open for 30 days, and then close it at the end. We would continue to give you updates on what's coming in and what people are presenting. But I think it's a much more transparent process to say to the public, "The warrant is open for 30 days, please bring us your articles." And I think it would be much more efficient for Lori, Indy, and I, as we prepare the warrant. So we'd be happy to share drafts with you, we'd be happy to share with you the articles that are coming in, but I think that that would be a better process, rather than opening and closing it and trying to kind of fit things in to that short schedule. I will say that-
But many good updates. I wanted to jump in on the $81,000 in Chapter 90 money. So what prompted that additional disbursement from the state?
I think most everyone got an increase, so the governor filed an additional $20 million supplemental budget for Chapter 90 local transportation aid funding. It's a 10% over the original funding amount. This happened the last couple of years. This is more than usual. It's not usually 10%, so this is a higher number than we typically would see, but it's just a supplemental budget.
So we have a pretty, so two, two things regarding road repave, A is, or the first piece is that we have the Columbia Gas portion of funds that go towards road repave, but then we also have our standard five-year plan, right? Where people can go online, they can see whether their streets are on that list. Does this extra unanticipated money, would we look at that and say, "Okay, well, what's now the type of project that we could tackle that normally never gets to be on the top of the list?" Like, namely, I was thinking, like, this is the type of money we could use for sidewalks, correct? Even though it's-
So, yeah. Chapter 90 has to be used for regional, regional projects typically. And so, like, so it has to be a road that has regional significance in order to use Chapter 90 funding. It can't be used for just any street.
Okay.
So typically what you would see in an instance like this is that we'd actually reconfigure our formula for the year in our pavement management plan and see kind of what the next road is that comes out. And I know that pavement management can be really kind of frustrating for people because you often see us doing work on roads that don't seem bad in order to keep them in a good condition. But typically, that's what you would see. You would see them reformulate the formula for the year and see what that next road is that comes forward. So, we just heard about this last week. I, we haven't had a conversation yet on how we would use that funding. It did increase our Chapter 90 up to 898, 348, which is pretty significant for this year. But I, I can certainly speak with Jim. If you look at our capital improvement plan, it does have a list of streets for the fiscal year, but it was relying on that original number of more like 810. So I'll be sure to ask him what his thoughts are for the additional appropriation.
Just to consider, so when we were doing the road repave work on Route 125 and adding the sidewalks along the shoulder, going from where like Casa Blanca is towards Sutton Street, there, it kind of stops just about where that gas station is, and I think the long-term plan, the long-term vision, but not necessarily enshrined in plan, was that that sidewalk managed to be extended all the way up to ideally where, ideally, long-term where Chadwick's McAvoy Playground is. And so since this wasn't something that we were necessarily expecting financially, it would be an opportunity to be a little bit aspirational on that type of roadway, because that is of regional significance. And the impetus was that because additional housing was going up on 125, that we could actually make it pedestrian-friendly and possible for people living all the way up in those units that are going in at Princeton Properties, ideally to be able to actually walk down Sutton Street.